Let me call the meeting to order and I'll start us off by asking Councilman Farmer to, or Council Lady Farmer, to lead us in prayer.
Could you please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, as we gather before you today, we ask for your guidance in all things. And when we leave here today, we ask for that guidance to continue. Dear Lord, we thank you for the rain that you have sent our way and most humbly pray for some more. If you see your way to shower us with a little bit more, we will be forever thankful. Thank you today, dear God, because you have been faithful in my every time of need. I will trust you this day for what lies ahead and to assist each one of us. Amen.
Being assisted today by Hannah Robinson, who's a fifth grader at Cornerstone Christian School. Now is that a just finished, that looks like, you look like a just going into fifth grade. All right, she's a fifth grader coming up at Cornerstone Christian School. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Good job.
Because I'm not seeing. Do you want to do it anyway? Or do you?
We'll wait.
Okay. Let me start off with a recognition. I have today, I would like to recognize the City of San Angelo Finance and Budget Division, so if I could be joined. We'll be, we see our budget manager Morgan Chegwood pretty often up in front of us and then from time to time, we see our senior budget analyst Laura Brooks and Morgan obviously sees her often in their support of their work. And these folks have been recognized with an award, so I'd like to read a little bit about that. The City of San Angelo's Budget Division has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the city's 2012-2013 fiscal year budget from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. The GFOA said the award represents a significant achievement by the city, reflecting a commitment by the city council and the budget staff to meet the highest principles of governmental budgeting. Award winners must satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for the effective budget presentations that assess how well a budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. The city council is proud to recognize Mrs. Chegwood and Laura Brooks at this meeting and honor them for their, their award received from this organization. Nice job. Thank you very much. I have to say that the folks in accounting and finance are typically my favorite. They have very little to say. Public comment, the council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. So is there any desire, council?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item seven to be discussed.
Okay. Anything else, council? Okay. Item three. Okay. Item three, okay. Might I get a motion then about the consent agenda?
Motion to approve a consent agenda excluding item three and seven.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with the removal of items three and seven to the regular agenda. Let me call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, do I have any comments from council members? All right, do I have any public comment this morning? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Jim Turner. Kind of a follow-up on something that I thought was going to be on the agenda, but it's mostly been resolved. I did get feedback today from IT on the fact that they are going to be keeping the sanangelo texas.us domain name so that the old addresses, old emails and so on will still work as they have forever. And hopefully they'll continue this on into the future. The amount of money it costs is very minimal. I still have a problem though, that has not been resolved, on a communication of this particular change, changes on the website and even some issues with the water department. The city still has not addressed the issues I brought up that amount to a very bad culture of poor customer service that needs to be addressed. The information, the way it's being presented to the public, the dismissive attitude dealing with some of the people in lots of different offices within the organization bothers me greatly and that needs to be dealt with in front of the public by council and staff because it's a major problem that's hurting the city, its efficiency, and how it works. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment? Outstanding, I'm going to move us to item number three then on the consent agenda. Mr. Alexander, right?
Okay, yes, item number three. Tim?
Yes.
Help me out here, a couple of things. I don't, I don't see, what I'm looking at is in the past, we, get this right now, we backed off on this a little bit, we got a little bit behind on our streets. This Millan Overla, it's not Millan, is it Millan Overlay?
Yes, sir.
It, this is the, is this tar, gravel, or Millan Overlay? Is that sanding it? Let's take it two parts, which one is it?
It's taking the asphalt off, milling it up, and then putting a new course of asphalt back down.
Okay, and which streets are these?
It is North Main Street from East Houston Heart Expressway to East Eighteenth Street, East Fourteenth Street from Main Street to North Chadburn Street, West Nineteenth Street from North Bryant Boulevard West to the railroad crossing, and then North Oak Street from Eleventh Street to Fourteenth.
Okay. No further questions.
Okay, motion to accept?
Second.
Okay.
I'll make, I make the motion, yes.
Yes, so Mr. Alexander makes the motion, mine was a question. Motion to accept from Mr. Alexander, second from Ms. Farmer. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Outstanding, my item passes, let's move to number seven. This is Ms. Farmer. This is the consideration of approving the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's recommendation. Ms. Farmer?
I do not want it to appear that I'm against sports. I'm, I'm not. I have fought far, far too long for the sports complex to be against it, but it concerns me is to waiving fees. That's all we have for maintenance out there to help us, so you want to tell me a little bit about why we should waive the fees in this case?
I think in this case, we're really weighing the economic impact of the event on our city versus the amount that's, of the unbudgeted expense in Roger's budget for the Texas Bank Sports Complex. It looks like the numbers we calculated with the Chambers formula adds up to about $1.3 million versus the 13 or so thousand and fees that we would be waiving.
Well, I understand the economic impact, but the SAGFA, the Girls Fast Pitch, they have a huge economic impact and then all of the other organizations have huge economic impacts and we do have what is rated the number one, didn't we receive the award, the number one in the fields, and to keep them maintained and pay the water bill out there for one, these fees are what takes care of it and I'm opposed to waiving the fees. You didn't mention anything about it creating a financial hardship for the local organization.
Yeah, the organization itself can probably speak to the hardship or no hardship that exists with that, with their budget. They show that they would have a loss if they did not have this tournament and is looking for, for a home to be here. I'm neither for or against it, it's the recommendation of the advisory board that we're bringing forward. They unanimously approved the amount. You can approve it in part, in whole, or not at all. That's entirely your pleasure.
Did the advisory board discuss precedent, the precedent idea of what happens to someone who has paid before who might now look at this and say, well, you know, we don't feel we should have to pay either or, or a future, a future group?
There was some discussion about it, however, the information that they had to go on, since it's a relatively new board, was the approval of the SAGFA All-Star Tournament the year prior. So there was, they requested seventy, they got $7,667 in in-kind services. So that's basically the information they had to go off of, is a prior approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Ann, question. The, the Texas West Little League, that state tournament is, how often do we get it?
They're looking for a permanent home and AJ can correct me if I'm wrong, so if they like San Angelo and its fields, then they're looking to stay here.
Any idea on the number of teams you get when they come in?
The number of teams that they've indicated is about fifty, 51 teams with about 7,000 spectators.
Wow. Well, have you said that? I mean, I, I agree that setting the precedence is not a good thing, you know, we open up ourselves to, but in this case, I, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this. I, I do like the numbers and I had asked some of the new members that have come on board and they were comfortable with what is going to happen when all these folks come to town, so.
I'll second it.
The, the one thing I would like to clarify is that in this tournament, to obtain the tournament, we, they wanted us to give up our concession portion. So to get them here, to see if they like the fields, if they like San Angelo, we went ahead and did that. However, that is a point where we would recoup some of the money for maintenance on the concession portion if we were to negotiate not giving all that away. So I, I just wanted to make that clear so that if they were to come back.
How can we, it seems like that we have a contract with a concessionaire, so what is there in his contract that allows you to tell him you can't have this tournament?
We didn't tell him. It was negotiated with him directly.
Okay.
So, so he was okay with it this one time, just to, for the economic impact of our community to make sure that we were able to obtain the tournament, however, it would be a point next time if the tournament were to want to stay, that we would keep some of that portion of the concession money to help recoup the, the impact of that.
Yes ma'am, I'd heard a little bit of conflict about removal of equipment or all that, so I didn't, that's why I was asking if there was a problem with the two contracts.
Right, I think it was, it was, our San Angelo hosts, they completely furnish the equipment that's in there and if we were to allow someone else to use the concession stand, then he would have to completely empty it out. So that was one of the things that the tournament wanted to use, was the concessions. He went ahead and said, yes, you can have the concessions, however, you cannot use my facility. So you'll have, they're doing tents, which actually kind of works out better because then it's closer, since we only have a concession at Quad One and Quad Three. So he can have satellite sites and be more accessible.
So it's all a negotiated outcome, is what you're saying though, right? Because I mean, one contract would, would say he gets to have it and, and so what you're doing is going to him and saying, well, how about if we, you know, if we do these things, would that be okay?
Right.
And that's how it's being done.
Right. But he did, the concessionaire, Carlo, did want to make sure that we were not, that he was not setting a precedent here because he said this one time thing, that it was not going to be the same for each additional tournament. It would be on a case-by-case basis because he wants to work with us, he wants to work with anybody that wants to come through San Angelo, he doesn't want to hurt our community in any way from receiving large events.
Thank you for the information. Others with questions?
I think.
Okay, I got Mr. Alexander and then I'll get.
My question is, they've already accepted this tournament, they're coming to San Angelo and then after the fact, we're going to give them a in-kind donation. Is that correct?
Well, they're receiving it in services. The only actual money exchange would be for the restroom service, which is about 500 and something dollars to make sure that we take care of that, that it's, it's done. And the $3,000 vendor fee to bring the tournament here. The rest is more in, in-kind, so it would be taking care of the fields, it would be rooms.
My concern is, when you've, when we've sold something, we should shut our mouth and take the money and serve, do the best we can, and I'll talk about next year. If you want to re-sign this tournament back to San Angelo, you'll get this signing bonus for coming back to San Angelo and we can offer that in the signing bonus next year. Now we're attracting them back again, so my, my feeling is if we're going to take in-kind fees, it's going to apply towards next time they come back. Or if we look at the very end and they've lost $5,000, I'll say, okay, we'll cover that $5,000, that loss. We don't want you to take a loss, but we also don't want you to profit after we give in-kind services. So I, I see this as very, I'm closer to Charlotte.
Right.
That we could do this differently, trying to attract them back, and that is a big deal.
I agree. We could look at a process that can really do something to bring back business.
I'd like to get that into the discussions, hey, so.
There's not someone here from their organization?
Yes, AJ Turner is here to speak to that.
I'd like to ask him if he talked with the chamber. Sir, were you able to talk with the chamber about the sports committee and any, any help or support from the sports committee at the chamber?
We got to go with the sports committee, yes.
Okay.
We got what's called a vendor fee that was required of us upfront, the $3,500, we got that from the sports committee. Now, as far as me actually talking to the commission, no sir, I didn't, I didn't personally do it.
Well, that's okay.
I've been dealing with, I've been dealing with the CVB, going through them.
Right, but, but the sports committee at the chamber did support your event?
Yes.
Okay, and it was at thirty, the $3,500 level?
Okay, now, I guess I'm confused.
Go ahead.
The sports advisory committee that we just met with through the recreation department.
No, sir.
Okay.
See, there's a recreation board here.
That's the one, yes.
I'm talking about the sports committee as part of CVB.
That's the, yes sir, and I serve on that one.
Did they support you and did they give you money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Costa DC gave them $3,000.
Doing that to get it on the record, Mr. Silva.
Sports committee $3,500 and then in-kind.
Correction, Costa DC didn't give them $3,000.
They didn't give them.
Costa DC gave the sports complex $3,000.
Correct, to build a mound at the 50-70 distance.
So they would have it for a total of $13,200 services in your favors, that's, that's right here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're wanting the $14,618 from the city?
Yes ma'am. We really don't have a history to the tournament yet, since this is the first year it's been here. And once we get the history established and we see how it's actually going to fall out at the end of the tournament, then some of the money will be returned back to those that gave us the funding and afforded us the opportunity to host it here.
You're planting the seed for this first timer. My, my question would have been to Mary Ann or the, they, this organization or the Texas West, they were in contact with Carlo on concessions, so that, that was Carlo's deal. He was okay with allowing, now, they're not going to use our concession building, but is Carlo going to offer concession on his own also? Or is it just them strictly?
No, it's them strictly.
Strictly, okay. Again, I'll stick with my motion to approve it and.
Yeah, no problem.
The, the, just so we clear.
I have a motion in a second, just for everybody to know. I have a motion from Mr. Silva and a second from Mr. Hirschfeld to approve this as presented. So this is just the discussion point before we call for a vote, okay? You have something?
I would also recommend, of course, that in the future that we do establish strong criteria, when we start looking at economic impact or community and again, we start talking about setting precedent, we also want to make sure that in the future, we're, we're fair and we have a pretty good idea of what that criteria should be for anyone else that comes forward and requests money also. So that's something that we definitely want to make sure we look at.
Okay.
Any other questions before I call for this vote?
Mayor, may I ask really quickly, are you looking at the total, grand total amount to approve? Or not the grand total, but the.
The way the gentleman, the way the gentleman made the motion, it would be for the total.
Is it for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board total or the total that the event is looking for?
$14,093.75.
Okay.
Okay. Let me call for this vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay, I have a four, two to four vote. Ms. Ramirez, I have a two to four vote on this, okay? So I have Mr. Alexander.
Yay or nay? I'm nay, I'm no.
Yes, sir. Sorry, in the yay, I have Mr. Silva and Mr. Hirschfeld. In the nay, I have Mr. Alexander, Mr. Self, Ms. Farmer, and me.
Four-two, failed.
So, do you want to make a motion related to partial or, I, I just cannot see us setting this precedent, I can't see us starting down this path and there have been some big tournaments out there and the, and the whole thing was the investment in that, in that set of fields and, and currently, we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars out of development corporation dollars helping to support the maintenance of the field and so, you know, I feel like we need to make revenue from this and, and so forth. And so the fact that the concessionaire is not involved, and I see that as a problem from a, from a precedent basis and I see just on and on, I think we're opening up a can of worms, so that's what's bothering me. I'd rather, very much like what Mr. Valenzuela said, I'd very much like to have us have a set of guidelines for the si, if a tournament is this size, here are the things we will do or something, but I, I don't want us to do this in a loosey-goosey fashion.
May I ask you a question? Your feelings, what, what if we did say, okay, we'll cover your losses up to a certain amount upon resigning this tournament back to San Angelo?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is.
You like that better?
Well, I mean, I'm just saying I'd like to see guidelines like that set up where, you know, I mean, there's a sports committee at the CVB and they supported it and that's the way we, we support the CVB. I mean, in other words, that's money from us coming back into the system, so my perspective is that they've gotten that support and, and so we're already in support of their tournament and so that's, you know, you put all that together, it's kind of hard for me. I'd rather the sports committee be doing a bunch of that work rather than us, but anyway. Mr. Silva?
Well, let me ask this. I, I guess the bottom line that, that I'm looking at is some, we need to get this tournament here started somehow and I understand by precedent, setting precedence, you don't want, you don't want to open up a can of worms and then everybody jumps in wanting all these freebies, but what is the least amount of money or not, not even monetary exchange, but what could we do to get them here? I mean, what is the least amount?
You mean back here? Because they're here.
No, they're not.
No, no, this, they're trying to get here.
This is the state tournament.
But they're coming.
No.
That's the question I asked.
Are they coming for sure?
It's, it's already posted on their website that they'll.
This is where they're coming.
That they'll be here. The tournament is going to happen regardless of.
Were they coming based upon these facts right here?
They were coming based on getting the concessions, they were coming based on the hotel rooms and the CVB and the mound, the building of the mound. AJ can correct me if I'm wrong, but those were, those were the criteria.
Those were the terms that they agreed that they were coming based upon?
Correct. They would like the rest of this to help, any kind of money that they were to generate from the tournament would go back towards the little leagues to help them because they're non-fee based, so they, anyone's ability to pay does not prohibit them from playing.
Okay, so tell me again, they're, they were coming based upon the mounds?
The mound, which is.
AJ, just please correct us on this and make sure that we're, we're saying this correct. Because if, if they're coming and we agreed to do certain things, I think, you know, and I think we need to live up to that deal to get this tournament and not reneg on that.
There were certain things that we had to do to get the tournament approved.
Okay, so, so what, what are those specifically?
The field had to be prepared, which meant the mound had to be built.
The mound, the Costa DC.
We had to guarantee the number of motel rooms here in town at that time of the tournament. And we had to guarantee a certain number of volunteers were going to be available to work the tournament.
Okay.
Okay, who, what else?
Besides the, the shape and condition of the complex, that's basically it.
Okay, so essentially what we needed to.
And the vendor fee that, that we had to pay upfront, yes, I forgot about.
The vendor fee, okay, that's the CVB money.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so the hotel rooms is the CVB in-kind. Am I correct? Okay. I, I just, what I, what I want to put together is I want to put together this thing, whatever we agreed to to get the tournament, if we committed to having this done and having that done and having that done to ensure that they're here, I would like to get that passed and then move on with the rest of it.
As far as I know, the mound is built or almost built, the 500 rooms from the CVB are blocked. The volunteers are strictly on their side, the vendor fee has been, the check has been written. So that's done. There were some fencing requirements, so the fencing is an in-kind contribution from the CVB as well. So, and the concessions were, I thought, a requirement.
Were the concessions part of the deal?
Originally, there was some confusion about the concessions, yes, but they were part of the deal.
Okay, so Costa DC, CVB, CVB in-kind, and I'm looking at my list here, is what I've got, and then the concessions.
Yes.
None of the rest of this was part of the original deal?
No, and part of that is because on the field services, Roger's crews have taken training and have the expertise in doing the fields. They want field preparation in between games and Roger has expressed that he can do some, a flex time, which would not use this entire amount, hopefully, but it was a top amount that they might have to use for staffing to help do that. Their volunteers can, they just cannot use the equipment, the motorized equipment. They can use hand drags, they can use the chockers, their volunteers can use any, all of that, they just cannot use the motorized equipment.
Did we agree to the field rental?
Yes.
Beforehand?
It was, the field rental, they were asking for after the fact. We had a meeting to make sure that everything was, was in place, everything that he, that AJ and their group thought they were getting, they were getting. So in that meeting, the fees, according to the CVB and my understanding, were, they were not covered under the initial agreement. So that's part of why we're here, to see if you all were willing to waive those fees to get that tournament here. So no, that was not included.
That was not, field rental was not part of it? Field services, again, is that part of it?
That's not part of the agreement, no.
Not part of the agreement? The gate fees?
No.
Okay, concessions, yes?
Yes.
What percentage? Restroom service?
Hang on, you guys, I've got one council and I'll.
The restroom service, no, but in, that's something that we like to do for bigger tournaments, just to make sure that the restrooms are maintained, but that was not included, no. That is up to the renter to keep up with the restrooms.
Okay.
Mr. Self?
Okay, if I understood what you just said, there, there's no hiring of additional staff for, for the city, it's, it's what, the, the numbers that we're getting will be the staff that we already have.
Correct.
Okay. Really, I, I guess, I guess my hangup, my only hangup is concession, you know, if, you know, AJ and I go way back and I, I think it's a good deal, I just, you know, we, I believe we either need to, we shouldn't give the whole farm away, we, we got to keep a section of it and, and I guess that's my concern.
Ms. Farmer and then Mr. Silva?
Why are you requesting the street closure? Why is that necessary?
That way we control who comes and goes because we do take a, we charge for a parking fee for them to come in.
Oh, you're going to charge a parking fee to these?
Six dollars a day. Six dollars a day. Six dollars a day.
Okay. And you're going to provide security, the police? How many police do you think is going to be needed?
Two police officers will be patrolling at all times.
I'm sorry?
Two police officers will be patrolling at all times.
And how many people are you expecting?
Overall, upwards of five to seven thousand.
Six dollars a space and you couldn't even, if you can have that many, you're going to need more, two police.
Well, it says five hundred and sixty-one participants plus fifteen hundred spectators over a four-day period is whether you come up with a seven thousand.
Right.
So it becomes a, a private affair, just somebody for relaxation can't go and watch even if they don't have a kid because it's your private party. I mean, you're charging a fee, you're controlling the gates and you want to close the streets and you'll make income off of that.
Yes, ma'am.
And trash detail, who is responsible for the picking up and...
We do all of that. We're also going to have medical personnel on staff too for the tournament.
Ms. Farmer, you're, you're okay?
I'm fine, I've got my questions answered.
Mr. Silva's?
AJ or Mary Ann, on the, back to the concession that we're, seem to have a hangup on, did you say we're going to get, we will get a part of that back? We will get none back? I thought you said that they had negotiated a percentage or...
They're allowing us to sell concessions on the complex outside of the facilities that are established there.
Outside the gates?
No, outside of the buildings, the concession buildings.
Okay.
We're going to be under tents.
What Carlo negotiated was that they could, that he would receive twenty percent of the concessions and they would receive the difference of that, providing their own concessions under tents at the different quads.
Okay.
And the city would not receive anything off of that?
No, Little League is receiving that.
Got it. Okay, we've had a, a good discussion, we've had a motion and a vote, okay? The only thing that I want to remind the council of, and this is the thing that's been on my mind, we, one of the things that we've talked about consistently over the last three or four years is on a first-time event, doing something that helps them, but then the problem I have here is we don't have a future event on, online.
Which is what I want to incentivize here. That's what I want to do.
And so, you know, we've talked about, well, how do you help somebody the first time and then, and then go from there? Your thought process of, of an after-the-fact review of how did they do? If they made money, why would they, you know, and that kind of thing? And talking to them about the next event and how we might help them, those are all the kinds of things that make sense to me. What worked here and what didn't work here? And, and what can we do to help you be successful as time goes by? But I feel like with the sports committee doing its job at the C V B, money is taken, we've given them money in, in, in doing those kinds of things. And I, and again, I just don't want to open up for an organization, something we wouldn't do over and over and over again for different organizations. I like us to be very consistent in our approach, so it doesn't matter who comes to the mic, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I will make a motion that we approve the assistance, but only half of what the request is.
So you're...
Because I have, there's no budget or anything for me to look at, what you're anticipating per head, per person, per card, you know, that your gross receipts are going to be on this. So I, you know, I'll approve it. I certainly would like to see the Western or West Texas Little League come to San Angelo again and again, but on this case, I, I want to cut the contribution in half.
But you're saying up to seven thousand dollars, basically, right?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to approve this, but with a cap on, on, on the award amount, whether in-kind or in fact, to be capped at seven thousand dollars. Is there a second for that motion?
I'm not real clear on exactly what...
What, what part with the seven thousand? It doesn't, I think in her mind...
They've got the fourteen thousand, get back up here to it, total amount that they're requesting from the city. Come on, come on, come on.
Yeah. Question?
Sure.
The city's portion of the concession is usually twenty percent. Now, is anyone receiving that?
Little League.
Okay, all right.
Okay. She's, she's looking to see what she'd want to...
I'll make a separate motion if I can make one.
Well, hang on, let's let her finish and see if anyone wants to follow.
Withdraw, nobody seems to really...
Withdraw. Mr. Alexander?
My motion is to provide, I think the amount is fourteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars seventy-five cents, towards a resigning bonus. If you'll come back to San Angelo next year, we'll, we'll give you that money to pay for losses this year. That's a maximum of to cover losses. So in other words, if they come back to us and say, we lost fifteen thousand dollars, well, we can commit fourteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents towards that if you resign next year to San Angelo. If they come back with a two thousand dollar loss, we have two thousand dollars to cover that loss. So everything's even if you come back to San Angelo next year. Does that, does that make sense? So this is a, it's a signing bonus to cover losses up to the amount they've lost. They do give us a final accounting, correct?
They do. However, we don't have a city person that's there with them checking to see this is how much money they've brought in, this is whatever, so...
Okay, then I change this to, you have up to fourteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents to resign them for next year. If they'll come back, you have that amount of money to work with to get them back into San Angelo. And then maybe the C V B, they can do what they want later and say, well, they've got plenty of money now. And they may not donate next year, but that allows them to get that, that tournament coming back. Because we're, we're trying to sell next time. That's what we're trying to do here. And then possibly the signing bonus goes down, I won't be on the council that time, but maybe it goes down next time. We don't give as much.
Okay, your motion is?
That's my motion, to give up the amounts, fourteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents to this organization if they resign for next year. It's contingent on them coming back.
But you're not talking about hard, hard dollars, you're talking about in-kind?
In-kind.
Perhaps the...
In-kind, because they, they can use it next year, they'll, they'll make it back. That's true. Is it, is it dollars or in-kind? It could be some dollars, couldn't it? Is that true or false? Is this all in-kind?
Some dollars, no, some dollars and some in-kind.
What is, what is dollars?
The only actual money they're receiving is from the, the twenty percent from the concessions and the thirty-five hundred, three thousand dollar vendor fee. That's the only actual money exchanged.
Wasn't it thirty-five hundred that you said?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-four hundred.
She had five thousand, she had five hundred for an item, three thousand for an item, those were cash items that we were giving up, okay?
Okay, then...
So there was three thousand five hundred in cash items plus, plus twenty percent of the concessions that we would normally receive. So what you're giving up in hard dollars is thirty-five hundred dollars and twenty percent of the concessions. The balance of, the balance of the fourteen thousand would be in-kind.
And I don't mind giving that money to them, cash back to them, especially if they have losses. And we're saying, you come back to us, we'll, we'll, we'll give you that cash, but we can't give them more than we have. I don't want to allocate more. So I don't know how to put that into a motion, but I, you have a suggestion on how to say that?
No.
Thirty-five hundred dollars. Thirty-five, we'll give up to thirty-five hundred dollars cash. So we're going to add that to the motion. It's a in-kind up to fourteen six eighteen seventy-five, but up to thirty-five hundred dollars of that can be cash from the city.
Can we hear from Carl?
Fine.
Yes, in just a second. Okay, I do have a motion. Is anyone going to second that motion? Okay, Carl?
There was a budget included in your packets?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have a recommendation.
Okay.
Carl, what I want to know is Roger and those guys out there have worked very hard in making those fields pristine in order to win that award and keep it. And people love to come to San Angelo and play out of that field. It's, it's used a lot. By letting someone else who doesn't have the training to maintain, they do it the way they want to and not the way Rogers Crew does it, how much damage have we had or could be done? Or how many hours does that take in man-hours if, if our people did it instead of theirs?
I wouldn't, I don't know if Roger's still here.
Yeah, I was looking for him.
He may be able to answer that question better.
He babysits those fields to keep them pristine and that's why they're enjoyable to play on.
No, that's, that's a good question. We have an agreement with AJ and their team to work in conjunction with. So when they're out there working those fields, we're going to have a representative there so that there is no damage.
Okay, that makes me feel good.
I do have a recommendation. In the past philosophically, if, if we make some of the revenue from a tournament, then we cover expenses, some of the expenses. In this case, this tournament is getting all the revenue and they're asking us to cover some of the expenses. So perhaps we could let them take the revenue, the gate fees, the concessions, but ask them to cover the expenses, which in this case would be the field rentals, the field services, the security and restroom services. That would be my recommendation.
That was three thousand and something?
If they're keeping all the revenue, we're not getting any of the revenue outside of the economic impact. So in this case, since they're keeping all the revenue, we ask them to cover our expenses, which is the field rental, the field services, the cost of the security and the restroom services.
What's that, what's that total?
Not that quick.
Security.
Carl? My, my question is, isn't that, isn't that the case? If we do nothing?
Nine thousand dollars.
That's what happens if we do nothing, you guys?
I think that is correct.
Okay, so I, I mean, you guys, we're, we're done. I, I mean, we've tried several times to get a motion and a second. Let's move on. We took a vote, we, you know, let's move forward. If this needs to come back for a future agenda item with some kind of different look, you guys could bring it back. But we've had a two to four vote, we've discussed this several ways, we've had two motions made with no second. And, and everything is set up for them to get all of the revenue from this, okay? And they've had support from us through the C V B and thirty-five hundred dollars of cash. Let's move on and then bring this back for a future item.
Could I ask one question?
Mr. Self?
AJ, would, we keep talking about what we're going to get in the future. I, I know a couple of the conventions that our fire sprinkler people put on, we make a commitment upfront to, to, in order to get, to get concessions at places we stay, we, we go ahead and we'll sign a three-year contract. Do you know if they would be willing to commit three years?
What this is, the first year is basically a trial basis. They want to come in, they want to see how the tournament rolls, they want to see how the city handles the group coming in, how the motels work with us. After that, then the contract comes into play and they're looking at a three-to-five-year deal right now. And that's what they're, that's what they're wanting is a home for this tournament.
Okay. I think the point is if you, if you bring back a three-to-five-year deal, I think you're going to get some interest.
Well, the problem we've got, like I told you upfront, we've got no history with hosting this tournament as of yet. I don't know what it's going to cost us to run this.
Right.
The medical, the security, the concessions, the souvenirs, the vendors, all that kind of stuff, it's going to cost us money upfront. My Little Leagues don't have a whole lot of money. From the district level, I've got zero. I operate just off of what's coming out of my pocket. So what we were trying to do is to go around and get some support from different people to help us fund this. Once we get through the tournament and we see the final tally, we're going to start paying people back. We want to give the money back to the advisory committee, we want to give the money back to you guys, but we don't know how much actual money there's, there's going to be. Once we get to the tournament, we might have seven thousand people show up to watch this, we might have two hundred. I don't know. It depends on motel rooms, it depends on the expenses of living at the time. All that stuff comes into play. So we really don't know. I wish I could give you a great forecast and say, we're going to be rolling in it, but I can't do that.
AJ, let me ask you this, when you say home, so that would make this a permanent location for this tournament?
Yes.
Because we're not talking about, we're not talking about some kind of rotation where San Angelo comes in after this would be home, home?
They're talking about a home for the Texas West Little League tournament.
So is my motion not sounding better? I mean, I want them here. I want to put the money towards them coming back.
We bid on this five years ago and we would have wanted it if the fields had have been closer to being completed at that time. But everything was hesitant on, on when it would be and they needed to have some security that the fields would be completed with grass growth and all that kind of stuff. It's kind of hard to make that commitment. So we went ahead and backed off of that, moved it to another location for three years and now it came back up for bid. We rebid it and we won hands down. We competed against San Antone, Metroplex area and all those other areas and we got it.
How did you bid it?
We bid it through the cooperation with the C V B. We put the package together. There was some confusion in the bid when it first went out. I'll be upfront and honest with you, okay? Concessions were confusion, the field rental and reservations were confusion, all that stuff was a confusion. As of a month ago is when we started having all the meetings and everything starts changing and shuffling. And that's when we start panicking, trying to figure out, okay, now how are we going to take care of this? How are we going to cover this? My biggest concern was I wanted this to be a community event. I wanted San Angelo to benefit from this. I wanted my Little Leagues to get some kind of benefit, that way they could prosper and we could keep providing baseball for children of San Angelo. That's the whole reason we went forward with trying to do this. I don't want San Angelo to suffer. I don't want us to lose money doing this. I don't want my fields tore up. That is our complex. We paid for that complex. I've worked hard with Roger, we worked hard with Pam and Jenny over at the C V B. We've worked hard with Mary Ann and Carl over at the Recreation Department, trying to get this thing going. And I'm not politically motivated by any stretch of the imagination, guys. So this, this is my downfall, okay? And I apologize for that. But we thought that everything was on the up and up when we took off. And of course, there's a lot of details that are involved in this that I was not aware of when we started doing this. And when we originally started doing this, I was telling Pam and them at the C V B, we're going to give this money back, just give us a little help and let's get it, get it started. The first budget I submitted, you guys didn't see, I didn't give it for a million dollars of economic impact because I was trying to be a little bit conservative in that. I think I gave it for like ninety thousand dollars. I didn't want to go up into the millions because I have a hard time projecting that kind of stuff. So this is basically for the community, for the kids. I want my Little Leagues to grow, I want them to prosper. That's why we've done this.
Where do these teams come from, AJ?
All over the state.
This is the championship. This is where all the best teams come from.
It has been twenty-something years since San Angelo has sent a Little League team to a state tournament. They're coming from San Antone, they're coming from Dallas, Amarillo, El Paso, Midland, Odessa.
Well, we've been at this item for forty-nine minutes or forty minutes or so, but again, it's, it's a no-brainer for me. I made the motion the first time around. If you're ever gonna bring me a million dollars in revenue as far as an economic impact at San Angelo, I'm for it. And I would do that for any organization. Talking about presidents, well, if you're gonna, if something happens to lure more people here, then so be it. I mean, more power to you guys. And I'm with you. And again, I'll make a motion to approve it as presented. And that's all I can do. If, if it gets shot down, fine. If, if the timeline is still there, that we can work on it and tweak it more, so be it. But I, I will make a motion once again to approve it as presented to us, okay?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Marty.
No, I was just gonna say if that motion fails, I would like to make a motion to see if I can receive a second.
Okay, Mr. Self?
I, I make a motion that we approve it as is with the exception of the concession of the thirty-four hundred, or, or the, with the exception of the twenty percent. And if they re-sign, then we'll give them that twenty percent. And if not, then we keep the twenty percent. And, and that's similar to yours?
Yeah, that's good.
With the exception of the, of the, the rest of the in-kind. Cause the, the, the field services and, and if it's, we're gonna have those employees anyway, so, okay.
Okay, so you're, what you're?
I need an interpretation of what that summary is.
Okay.
That means we're giving how much money?
We're, we're basically giving them everything they asked for with the exception of the twenty percent concession. And if they sign at the end of, of this year, or at the end of the tournament, if they sign to come back next year, whatever that twenty percent is, we'll, we'll let them have as a signing bonus.
So the in-kind part, we're gonna give them the funds that were received from them. We're not giving unless they come back. Is that what we're saying basically? Nope?
No, I'm, I'm.
Here's what he said. Is it, here's the way, from what I understand the information to be. There's, there's a three thousand dollar fee and a five hundred dollar fee. He's waiving those, okay? He's waiving, or he's providing the in-kind services, like field services and bathroom or cleaning or whatever, those kinds of things. He's providing that with the, with the logic that we have those employees. We're gonna use them sometime. Let's just use them for this, okay? And then what he's saying though is he wants the twenty percent from, the twenty percent commission that we would normally get from a vendor out there, our vendor, okay, to, to come to the city.
Okay.
But he would waive that if they sign up for next year. So he's saying, you know, you, you owe us that twenty percent off of this year unless you sign up for next year. And if you sign up for next year, we'll waive that twenty percent. So, and that becomes their signing bonus to sign up for the next year.
That's the best I could do.
Excellently said, excellently said.
If that's the best I could do, then, then I'll second that motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. I just explained it the best I can, so. Is there any further discussion on this item? Let me call for the vote. Go ahead, Mr. Silves.
I, I, I'm in total agreement. Let's get them here. But what, what if, I'm playing devil's advocate. What are they gonna say about next year? If I sign next year, what are you gonna require of me?
Well, I, I think, I think next year when they come, we, we look at, they know their track record. Then we look for the contract, the, the big enchilada, the three to five-year deal.
Okay, all right. I'm just throwing that in.
I think we need more work on this, is what I think.
Wanting to table per se and talk about it from the future?
From staff. I, I think we need, need a little more work. A little more planning, a little more long-term thought, a little more everything, so.
Are you, are you in agreement? I need to know this to know my vote. Are you in agreement that there are signing bonuses for coming back? Is that, is that an agreement?
I'm saying there needs to be a plan. There needs to be a program, a long-term plan.
Is that part of the plan? I mean, cause we gotta send directions to the staff.
I, I think that this thing is, is, I want them here. I think they're very good. I think they'll be very good. I think this is a big deal. This is a very big deal. And I, I want to see them come. And what I would like to see is a plan and a program put together that we can take for a program like this and go forward. And at the same token, if, at the end of the, end of the deal, I'm, you know, if, if things go really awry and you get two hundred participants, you know, I, I think we need to hear about that. We really do. And I think we need to be, we just need to see how this whole thing works.
Kendall, Kendall, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. But I'm looking at, this tournament is July fifth through the seventh and then again the eighteenth, so we've got a month.
Yeah, but, but keep in mind, again, going back to how the mayor, mayor said this, as it stands right now, they're gonna collect all the revenue. If we do nothing, if we don't approve anything, they're gonna collect all of the revenue. And then they're gonna pay the expenses. So they're gonna essentially get kinda what Charlotte had mentioned, was about half the money. Fair assessment? I mean, roughly. So, and it's not far off of what Marty's talking about. It's, I, I think we're, we're, it's kinda getting into semantics about wording of this and that and, and that. And so I would rather see a packaged program, packaged plan, an idea of what we can do, you know, for this one when it comes back and from there on.
And anything of similar size.
Right, right.
Same thing we do for the convention center, a package plan. You know, base rate is this, if you want. Like, you don't have any amount in it for barricades and it says in your application that you wanna barricade the streets. Can you use our barricades? It's just, like he said, I would rather make the motion to postpone this and bring it back at the next meeting with staff arranging.
We don't have to do anything.
Next meeting? Hang on. We do have a motion though, okay? So you're, you're speaking to this motion. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You have a motion in a second. So let's get to that vote and then vote from there.
If it comes back next meeting, I have a certain vote. If it's not coming back next meeting, I'm gonna vote differently. I mean, I need to know, next meeting. If it can come back next meeting, I'll, I'll table it with y'all. If it's not coming back, then I'm gonna vote yes.
Unless you redraw your second, you're voting yes anyway.
No, I can vote no, even with a second.
Okay, what I, what I have is?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. I need to know when is it coming back.
You have to put it on future agenda items and request that it come back at the next meeting. That's the way this works. We, we only get to talk about this agenda item now. We get to talk about future agenda items at another time. And you can, you can say I want it next meeting. But of course, that's when that would happen.
Would you bring it back next meeting?
Would I bring? I won't get in the way of that.
Okay.
If you withdraw your second, I'll, I'll make the second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
See, I knew, there you go.
All right, I have a motion in a second. And this has to do with giving them the three thousand dollar fee, the five hundred dollar fee and the in-kind services and the twenty percent on the concessions if they re-sign for a future, a future tournament. If they do not re-sign for a future tournament, we would get the twenty percent from concession sales. Let me call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. It's a two to four vote with Mr. Self and Mr. Silves voting aye and the balance voting nay. And so I, let's move on from this item, take a break and then, and then see if we can't talk about it in future agenda items. There's some kinda support here. There's just not a way forward yet.
Right.
Okay? All right, let's get to item number twelve after a short break, okay? Of approving, item number twelve is the consideration of approving, I do have a quorum, so. Consideration of approving the renewal of residential leases for the following properties and authorizing the mayor, city manager, or water utilities director to execute all necessary legal documents pertaining to the lease renewal. This is concerning lot nineteen, group two, and lot one, group sixteen out there. And this is a presentation by our water utilities director, Ricky Dixon.
Morning, Council Mayor, Mr. Valenzuela. For your consideration today, we have these two leases, the Simpson and Furlong lease. These are requests for a new forty-year lease necessary for financing purposes. Both these properties are pending sale and need these extensions to complete that transaction. Both the Simpson and the Furlong, Furlong leases are in good standing. It's all lease obligation and it's just standard lease renewal.
Questions for the gentleman? I, I know I have one. My, my understanding is that we're, you know, there's basically a deadline where you're selling properties and the renewals have a very different complexion to them. Am I, what, what am I not getting right?
I'm not sure, Mayor.
Okay.
I mean, these, we've been doing these for, like this for a long time, so I'm, I'm not real sure. The financing institution requires a longer lease for the financing portion, so, and, and that's why these typically do this.
Right, right.
I think the question is that previous council, whenever they started selling the lake lots, said by January first, year whatever.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, twenty seventeen.
The leases go to market value at that point. Eight percent of market value in twenty seventeen.
Okay, so these leases will extend beyond that?
Correct. But at the twenty seventeen mark in time, they will go, current ordinance says eight percent of market value and that's what these leases will go to, even though they go past that.
Okay, I got you. So they're not eight percent of market value right now?
No, that's part, January first, twenty seventeen. As ordinance states, at, at that point, the leases that are, are currently leased will be reappraised. And the new lease amount will be the fair market value times point zero eight. So eight percent of fair market value after a reappraisal in twenty seventeen. Any leases that are left out there?
Thank you. Other questions for the gentleman?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Do I have further questions? Do I have public input on this item? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number thirteen. Man, why can't everybody be like Mr. Dixon? We're like thirty-seven seconds. Consideration of adopting, did you see that, Mr. Elgathable?
Yes, sir.
All right. Consideration of, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a supplemental lease agreement extending the term of lease with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Immigration. And we have a presentation by our airport director, Luis Elgathable.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. What we have in front of you is an extension for one year for a lease with ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement. And for that one-year extension, we'll increase fifteen percent on the rate.
What is the part about arrears? I don't, that was odd to me when I was reading through it. Do they pay after the fact?
Yes, sir.
And that's just normal in their contracts?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's a one-page.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on this one?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second both right here. Mr. Remmers, one, two. And do I have any public input on this item? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number fourteen.
You just beat Dixon.
Yep.
Consideration of approving an amendment to the vision plan. Oh, Mr. Hens, you, you got problems. How are you gonna get this done in seventeen seconds?
Oh, I got this. You're gonna, you're gonna like this. Let me know when the seventeen-second starts. We talked with the applicant yesterday. He wasn't able to make it, so we'd like to pull it.
Okay. Motion to table? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You now win.
I bet he's on a losing streak moving forward.
That's probably a safe bet.
All right, item number fifteen. First public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending chapter twelve. And this is item number Z thirteen dash seventeen, P V McMinn Jr., presentation by our interim senior planner, Jeff Hens.
Sorry about that. The slides were in a weird order. But yeah, this is P V McMinn. This is a request for a zone change from RS one, single-family residential to RS three to allow for townhouses, townhouses on the following property. This is an unaddressed one-acre tract occupying the more, or the Claremore Heights Edition Block One, lots four through six. This property is, if you know where H E B is, there's a shopping center there directly behind that to the west, kinda south where the Sonic Drive-In is. We'd sent thirteen notifications for this particular request as, within the two-hundred-foot area. Two are in favor and two are in opposition. So let's kinda show you where that is. The H E B complex is located where the mouse is here and then the subject property is here. We've got a church across the street and then some single-family residences around it. This just shows you kinda how the property is divided up. We've got some single-family residential zoning, which is what these three lots are right now. And then we've got some neighborhood commercial zoning and more intense zoning on H E B, which is Zone General Commercial. This is the aerial photo of the property. You can see most of this is developed at this time with the exception of this strip of land here. On the vision plan in this area is calling for neighborhood development, so this would fit that request. This is a map of the notices that were sent out and who is in favor and who is in opposition to it. And those notifications and their responses were included in the background packet. This is just to kinda give you an illustration of, if you can picture these two lots here where the hash pattern is, what the proponent has indicated does. This is a proposed subdivision that would show how the townhouses would be placed onto the property. There would be twelve lots that would be created. And these are just a little bit bigger than the minimum requirements for townhouse lots. So they would take three single-family residential lots if this were approved and allow for twelve townhouses to be placed on those three residential lots. Looking east, from West Beauregard Avenue behind the property, there's not a lot. In this one, you can see the church. They've got some facilities here as well. There's several houses in the area. And then the vacant property is across the street here right now at this time. And this is just another view looking northwest at the subject property from the intersection of Mort Circle and Beauregard Avenue. This is where those townhouses would be placed if this were to be approved. And this is just looking north around Mort Circle towards H E B and the, the more commercial areas towards Sherwood Way here. Considering this application, the council may approve the proposed zone change. Remand this back to the Planning Commission for further discussion or deny the proposed zone change. Staff did recommend approval of this, as did the Planning Commission, by unanimous vote on May twentieth at the last meeting. I can go into more if you'd like regarding this, if there's any questions you've got with what this would allow for.
Counsel's pleasure. Ms. Farmer?
I have one question and I'd like a motion to approve. Have we addressed drainage?
That'd be?
Stormwater drainage over there because it can get rather messy.
Right. No, during the plating process, there's a chance for, when, when that is subdivided further to allow for the townhouses, if drainage or easements are necessary, we'd get them at that time or through site plan review when they get ready to actually place the structures on the property. There'd be some drainage concerns that would be addressed then.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Mr. Silves?
Jeff, I have a quick question. I was reading some of the, the letters that were sent out in notification. The ones, for example, the two that were in opposition, do you guys, when you receive that, do you guys call them and address their issues or the concerns or?
They're shared with the, the Planning Commission members and they'll have a chance to read through them. And if they've got any questions, these folks did happen to attend the Planning Commission hearing and voiced their concerns. And any questions they had, we'd address that at that time. But if they certainly, you know, if they call us in or if they write something that is, you know, really, some folks just write in, it'll be, they're just against the idea and, you know, that's it. There's, you know, there may not be any change in their mind. But if there's something out there, we can clarify before the meeting. We'll certainly make that effort though. It's a little more difficult sometimes if they don't leave a phone number for us because they'll just write back with their address. But if they do come to the meeting, we'll certainly try to address those concerns for them.
You know, I don't, I don't see how this would decrease property value, but that's just me. The other one was, there are no assurances that the town, townhome will have rear, rear entrance alley, accessible garage and so stuff like that. Is it?
Really, there's nothing that, in terms of the, you know, the property values, you know, yes or no. That'll depend on who you talk with. That's more of a question, you know, for this board or this council. But in terms of the rear access driveway, there's no way to put conditions on a zone change. So if the gentleman that develops these properties wishes to have them off the alley, he may, he may certainly have a driveway off of Mort Circle if he wanted to. It's really, you know, however the developer wants to do it.
I have a motion to accept as, as presented. I do not have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to, to accept this as presented. Further questions on this item or, or desire for him to show you more information? Okay, do I have public input on this item? Let me call for this vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number sixteen. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending chapter twelve. This is item number Z thirteen dash eighteen concerning Lauren Edwards, presentation by interim senior planner, Jeff Hens.
This is a request for approval for a zone change from ranching estate to heavy commercial that would allow for industrial service activities on the following property. This is at forty-three ninety-eight Jack Rabbit Trail, about thirteen hundred ninety feet northeast from the intersection of Jack Rabbit Trail and South Chadbourne Street, occupying about two-point-four-one-seven acres being tract nineteen B of this, of the Contra River Estate subdivision. Six notices, notices were sent for this. One was received in favor and one was received in opposition. This'll just show you where that property is. The Contra River runs through here. A lot of the industrial, you know, be familiar with this area. You're gonna see it again. Ms. Flaver has a, a zone change case in this area. But South Chadbourne Street, the base further east, ironically enough, the vision plan amendment that was just tabled is also in this area just east of here as well. So be ready for that next week if the proponent can make it. But back to this, this is zone ranching estate at this time. There's been no zoning history on the property up to this time. The areas around it are zone manufacturing and heavy commercial. These properties front onto the Crystalville Road that runs through here. And then Jack Rabbit Trail is, we're seeing more activity on this area for folks looking to do industrial-type services. This is an area of the property. You can see there's a existing structure on it now. They're looking to use that as a type of office and then construct a type of warehouse that would be used and a yard that would be used for these industrial service activities. The proponent has mentioned some oil service, you know, that type of work on this property is what they'd like to do and that would happen if this zone change were approved. The structure behind this, through our research, we found this is a former monastery of some kind. It's no longer in use at this time. It's zone light manufacturing and it's just, it's currently vacant at this time from our site visits. There's nothing really going on there. Now, the vision plan is calling for this area to be commercial, indicated by the red here. A little more, you know, so you can see what the area is calling for. Along the river, we've got coated, open space for folks, you know, to enjoy that river. Some neighborhoods north of Chadbourne Street and then industrial, more, more intense develop as you go to the east side of the Crystalville Highway here. And these are the notices that were in opposition and those were included in the background packet as well and the one that was in favor as well. Looking east at the property, there is the, the structure as indicated. It's got a fence around the property now as well. Looking west from the subject property, there's a berm and some, you know, type of a buffer. So that was part of staff's recommendation as well is that activities, you know, are gonna be somewhat isolated on this property and buffered from surrounding properties. And looking north up Jack Rabbit Trail, you can see there's, you know, quite a bit of tree cover that'll help mitigate some of those, you know, louder noises on the residential property that is across the highway as well or across this street. And considering this, same as the last time, you may approve this as presented. Remand back to Planning Commission for further discussion or deny the proposed zone change. Staff and the commission, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this six to zero.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Hirschfield, a second from Mr. Silves to approve as presented. Do I have any further questions from council on this? Do I have any public input on this item? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move forward then with item number seventeen. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending chapter twelve, item Z thirteen dash nineteen. No, you guys, I'm sorry. I think I made a mistake there. Appreciate you.
This is the area we just recently annexed, correct?
This is correct.
This is item Z thirteen dash twelve. This is item Z thirteen dash twelve, and our presentation is by our interim director of development services, AJ Fauber.
You'll bear with me for just a moment, please. On this request, this is for NE interests, which yes, is the property that we recently annexed into the city. The request is for approval of a change from ranch and estate zoning to high-rise multifamily residential RM-two zoning, which is typically for apartment buildings, is the request here as well. And this is fifteen acres of property, recently annexed to the city. Three notifications were required to be sent out in conjunction with this request, we only received one of those, and that was in favor of the request. The property is in far southwest San Angelo, we're currently looking at a lot of annexation activity in this area, so you might be quite familiar with it. This is just off the intersection of what would be US Highway sixty-seven, and a stubout of Apple Lucy Trail, which is right next to this particular property, and shown on the map here, you can see that that extension-
This will essentially be a continuation of that same development right there.
That is the intention, yes.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this as presented, do I have questions on this, or anyone that needs more of the presentation? Okay, do I have a public comment on this item? Call for this vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventeen is approved, and number eighteen is first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending chapter twelve, exhibit A. This is item Z thirteen dash sixteen.
This request is for change from heavy commercial to office warehouse zoning. This is a currently unaddressed five-acre tract, and this is just northwest of the intersection of Link Road and Crystalville Road, I'll show you that in just a moment. Only one notification was required to be sent in this request, and it was not returned. Here is the subject property, again, just north of Link Road, and just east of that interchange between US Highway sixty-seven and Loop three oh six. The property, as you can see from the aerial photograph, is currently vacant, there has been some activity at this location, and they are looking to construct an office building at the site. The vision plan excerpt shows that this area is called for an industrial type of classification, the office warehouse that they are requesting is consistent with that plan. And here are just a few photographs, this is looking south along Link Road, so the subject property here is just off of the highway. And then this is looking the opposite direction along Link Road, again, you can see the vacant property. And here's a last view of that vacant property. The planning commission recommended unanimously approval of this item, and planning staff also recommends approval, if you have any questions, we can get into those.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Hirschfield, second from Ms. Farmer, to approve as presented, do I have questions? Mr. Silvas.
Yes, sir. Sure, we can show you that. Here's sort of the bird's eye view of that property, the city limit is actually just off of the map here to the south, so this is close to the city limits, but it is within the city limits. And that city limit also wraps around to the east, also off of the scale of this map.
Other questions? Public input on this item? Call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nineteen. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance amending chapter twelve, this is item Z thirteen dash nineteen concerning Rocky Spoons, and we have a presentation by our interim director of development services, AJ Fauber.
This request is a change from multifamily residential to office commercial, property is located in the eight-hundred block of South Abe Street. That is at the intersection of Washington and Abe, so you may be somewhat familiar with that property, it's known as the Garden Club Building. We sent out seventeen notifications in conjunction with this request, and we received two that were in favor of that request. The two properties indicating their favor and support of this item are shown on the map here. This is in central south, sorry, central San Angelo, just south of the Concho River, as you can see from the map here, and we've got a closer look. One thing of note is that we do have a commercial zone here to the north, which is office commercial as well, the same zoning that's being requested today, as is a district to the south, so this will unite those districts nicely. The vision plan map excerpt for this property calls for a neighborhood center type of activity, the office commercial is ideal for that type of activity. And here's just a couple of photographs, this is looking eastward, subject property is in the foreground, this is looking at that neighborhood tucked away behind the building. This is looking south across the street at some of the commercial activity that you see along Abe Street. And north as well, you do see some office activity very close by in proximity. The planning commission also recommended unanimously the approval of this request, and staff also recommends approval of the request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Farmer, a second from Mr. Hirschfield.
I have a question.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Farmer and a second from Mr. Hirschfield to move this forward as presented, a question from Mr. Hirschfield?
That building's not historical, right, I mean, there's a big plaque thing out there?
Right, it's not locally designated as a historic building.
Okay.
Apparently, and this was discussed with the planning commission, apparently there have been some activities of note, and some individuals of note that were involved with that property, but it's not locally designated now.
So that, okay, but that's their issue, their problem, if whatever.
The owners were aware of this, and they mentioned that there was a plaque on the property, and talked about some of the rationale behind having that on the property, but they do understand that it's non-designated, and we made that clear.
Other questions? Mr. Silvas.
You are talking about the one on the corner?
Yes, this property right here.
Clubhouse.
Okay, how is that designated, how was that zone, low-rise multifamily?
Multifamily, yes, sir, that zoning dates back to the fifties and six, early sixties, so it's a holdover.
That explains it, okay.
Other questions for her? Okay, public input on this item? Call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number twenty. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of public right-of-way for Ella Street. And we have a presentation by our interim director of development services, AJ Fauber.
On this request, we are required to send notifications, I know we don't see these too often, but we did send nine notifications on this request, we received two in favor, and I'll show you where those two came from in just a moment. This is a section of right-of-way intended for Ella Street, was part of the Eastland Heights Edition, and so has long been dedicated. Just to give you an idea of where in the city this is at, this is just south of Houston Hard Expressway, this is in somewhat northwest central San Angelo. Here's a closer view of that area, this area is bounded by North Poe Street to the west, Vec Street to the south. As you can see, Ella Street in its current configuration, and you'll see this in the aerial next, continues to the edge of this property, but not through the property. This property, as you can see, is vacant and has been undeveloped for quite some time. This originated from the property owner of both pieces of property, that is, the piece to the north of this segment, and the piece to the south of this segment, wanting to unite those two properties together in an effort to put a business on this location, I believe it will be some sort of salvage yard facility. And so he approached city staff with the request to abandon this, and therefore unite those pieces of property together. The two notifications returned in favor of this request, our property enters eight and three, and you'll note that those are both facing onto Ella Street, and are somewhat close in proximity to the area that we're speaking of, had no objections, and the utility companies that we spoke with also had no objections to the request. Just a few photographs, this is looking back towards Houston Hard Expressway, this is from North Poe Street. So again, that segment of Ella Street is off to the right, or to the east of this property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented, do I have a further question, Mr. Silvas?
AJ, you said it'll be a salvage yard?
That's what I understand, we haven't had any formalized applications stating this, this has just been brought up in conversation.
Is that going to require them to have some kind of fencing, covered fencing around it, or do you know?
There will probably be some fencing requirements, because there is some residential zoning in the area.
Probably require a zone change, right?
I don't believe so, I believe the zoning is, and I don't know if it's in our information here, but I believe it is consistent with that use, that was one of the first things that we conversed with the property owner about.
I can't even believe that, it doesn't affect these folks, I mean, it doesn't bother them that a salvage yard would go next door to them, but I guess that's their prerogative.
I'm sorry to interrupt, here's the zoning request, that is a light manufacturing zoning district.
Light manufacturing, okay. That's all.
Yes, sir, other questions? Okay, public input on this item? Call for this, come on up. I nearly, I just nearly had put the gavel down.
Excuse me, my name is Sally Ayana, I just have a question, is that close to a church? I just want to ask if that was close to a church, and that, were they aware of it?
Thank you, let's ask and see what staff says. Are you familiar with whether this is close to a church, Ms. Fauber?
No, sir, I'm not. The, here's the aerial photograph, and so it's zoomed in closely enough, you can see the neighborhood there to the west.
It's not, it's not, it's not adjacent to, I don't know past that.
It's not adjacent to, correct, there may be one somewhere in that vicinity.
There's one further north on Russ Street, but I don't think there's any church close to there.
Okay.
So some, it sounds like if it's on Ella Street, it will be somewhere in this two-block area, perhaps.
Further public input? Okay, thank you, call for this vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move to item number twenty-one. This is the first public hearing and consideration of introducing an ordinance annexing certain properties situated immediately west and southwest of San Angelo. And we have a presentation concerning this by our interim director of development services, AJ Fauber.
Correct, what we're looking for today is one of our two required public comment periods, for individuals and citizens that may have comments either for or against the compilation of an ordinance that would eventually annex this property. The property is roughly twenty-five acres in size. Again, we're not looking to actually annex that property today, we're simply having a discussion of it, but it's in the same area, in far southwest San Angelo, that we looked at the zoning change on previously. You might remember this strip here to the east, that was annexed by this council very recently, so now we're just looking at the property adjacent to the west, also for a planned extension of the Preston Woods subdivision. And just to remind the public, we will have two of these public comment periods, the second will be on June eighteenth, and then we'll be bringing you an ordinance for introduction in July, and potentially finalization in August, at which time we'll talk about staff recommendations and the infrastructure in the area.
Okay, do you have questions for her on this? Let me open this as a public hearing on this item, is there anyone here that would like to, to present or be part of the public hearing related to this annexation process? Okay, the, the public hearing is closed, and now, what else do I need to do for you?
That's it.
All right, let's move to item number twenty-two. This is consideration of a petition for a variance, under section eleven point two oh four, section B, from the requirements of section eleven, two point two oh three, section E, water supply stage drought level two, regarding the watering of new landscape, and they have a presentation today by our water utilities director Ricky Dixon.
Morning again, for your consideration today, we have a petition that was for the variance on the daily watering from Farmer's Daughter, some works doing over at Lee Junior High, some sod placement. As you know, we entered drought level two beginning June first, and under drought level two, the watering of new landscape is only allowed once per week. Drought level one, there's a daily allowance, and Ms. Honnaker, who is here, can answer any questions you might have, I think, is requesting five extra water days to be used for daily watering, to get this sod established. She's had some problems with the growers, and, because of the severe weather, and she's just asking for five extra water days. And I think she would like to kind of spread that out if possible, if it rains, of course, she won't need to water or anything, but she would like to have five additional days of daily watering. So if you have some questions, we can certainly-
Okay, questions on this item?
How big of an area are you talking about?
This is the field at Lee, right? In the track, inside the track field, am I getting that correct, Tam? Yeah.
I believe that's correct, yes.
There's a questions about the specific place that you're wanting to do the extra five days of watering, if you could just describe to us the place and the size?
We have completed the infield, we completed that in good timing, it probably doesn't even need that much additional water. We did the outfield, it's, the total is almost three acres. We have suspended our installation, because we're at a point, we need to get it around the track field, because they're going to put an all-purpose field in there. And they can't do that until we get grass around it, so that they can keep it free from dirt and debris. We have put down two-thirds of the grass of what we're supposed to.
He, Mr. Hirschfield gave a little bit of specificity, but go ahead and tell us exactly where, is this at Lee?
Lee Junior High.
And tell us who you are again?
I'm Tam with Farmer's Daughter Landscape.
Okay.
Thanks, all of this about the recording.
And what they're building is they're building a track, and a kind of a football field, out in where there used to be a field, they've redone it, it's very nice.
That's in that area next to the gymnas, the back gymnasium?
Correct.
Yeah, it's on the corner of Guadalupe and campus.
And this is kind of their last stage of renovation, that they've been renovating for about twenty years? Sorry, that was a little crude, but yes, they've, because I've had kids go through there.
Right.
Every stage of renovation, so I'm just trying to give an idea, because I'm very familiar with this site.
We're on, we have started behind Lee Junior High on Campus Street, on the camp, on the south side, no, east side, excuse me, east side. The, the, the practice field is in place, it has been asphalted. We have put the irrigation, we have installed in the infield. Now we have, have completed from the sidewalk, back of the building, all the way across to the, we've kind of halfway stopped between the, what's it called, the long jump runs that are between that. We're midway now between Guadalupe Campus and the street on the other side where Guadalupe goes across, I don't remember the name of that street. I lack, I lack thirty, thirty-six hundred square yards of sod to put down, which we are suspending, we're not even going to attempt to do that until we get some, you know, new installation.
So what exactly are you requesting?
I need to water, I need to water what I put down.
What you've already placed?
Yes.
More than once a week?
For?
For five days, but I don't want to water every, I want to water at night, and I don't want to water every night for five days. I want to water, I watered, yesterday was my one water day for the week. I will skip today, and let me water tomorrow night. And if it rains this weekend, I'll suspend it, the, you know, if I don't need to water, I won't even water the five, you know, future.
You'll need it, it's going to be hot, dry, you're asking for one-point-four acre feet is what you're asking for, it's five inches, you want five days, five, one inch per day, three acres, about one-point-four acre feet.
Right.
Okay, all right, that's what they're looking for, and it will help them out greatly.
And?
Well, we're losing tons and tons of water elsewhere, if we made modifications to our system, we could save a lot of water, this is very little water.
And?
I would, a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, and a second from Mr. Hirschfield, do I have other questions on this item?
But I have a question.
Of course.
No, I'm not. Who do, I mean, I want to water five days, can I, if I don't need to water this weekend, but I pick it up next weekend and code enforcement calls, I get-
Talk to that gentleman right there, code enforcement reports up to him, and create communication.
Okay, so I can tell you when I'm watering, and you can tell me?
Create, yeah, create communication, so you can say, I'm going to do this on this day, that's number one. I'm going to do this on this day, that's number two.
Thank y'all.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Tony now.
Pam, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you, are there any other campuses that you're working like this with, that go and require water?
Remember, she's suspended on this one, she's just trying to take, she's trying to take care of what's already there, not trying to add anything to it.
If you don't give me permission, I would finish the rest of Lee Junior High.
Don't talk yourself out of it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to allow her to do what she's asked to do, okay?
Mayor, mayor?
Mayor, Mayor, hi, I, good morning.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend that council articulate the basis for granting this variance.
Better walk me through that then.
The basis is under 11.204. It states that the city ordinance, the city council may grant a variance from the requirements because of special circumstances either based on, cannot technically be accomplished, will cause undue hardship on a program or service by a public entity, or substantially threatens the applicant's primary source of income.
I need you to go back to the middle one because that's what this is.
Correct, correct.
So it's the public, the, the fact that this is Lee Junior High and the fact that this project is already underway, and we're only talking about that that's already been done, is why we are saying that this part of the, this Section 11.204B is allowing us to give this variance.
Absolutely.
Because it's a public property.
And it does fit within one of the criterias. I think it's important to have that in the record.
Oh, perfect, and I really appreciate it.
So, is that your motion?
So my motion is to approve as presented under B.
Right. Well, I mean, you're okay because the motion, the, the item already says petition for variance under Section 11.204B. So you're covered. All you have to do is say, she just is, for the record, clarifying what it says, which I really appreciate.
Make sure we go over it, okay?
People that, people that hear it now understand how and how come we can do this, okay? Okay, and so at this point, you have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Do I have any other questions from council? Do I have any other public input? Let me call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number 23. And thanks again, Ms. Bowling. I, I do like that, that clarification of how come. That was very helpful. Item number 23, discussion and possible action on the fiscal year 2012-2013 budget as it relates to ambulance fee revenue. We have a presentation by our budget manager, Morgan Chegwin.
Good morning. I'll go over this briefly for the, the public and the at-home viewers as we've discussed this recently, but that one of the lingering issues from the fiscal year 13 budget were that ambulance fees were adopted, but not yet decided how to be used. And so back in October, when Chief Dunn presented those items to you, we identified that there were all of these needs in the fire department.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Wasn't it just two meetings ago that this subject was postponed? I was thinking it was postponed till we had the new sitting council, and that won't be for another meeting.
No, actually. We're looking for seven. We're looking for seven members. We're looking for Vardeman to come on and make the seventh member because his district was, was not represented, District 4.
And he's not here today?
And he's not here. But if Morrison voted no, then Mr. Self is here, can vote yes, and that would take it to four votes passing our motion. If he voted no. I can't remember if he voted no.
I just know that it was postponed, waiting on a full, the new council for discussion.
Do you want to table?
Yes, I would like to table it until we have the.
I have a motion to table this item until there's a full council. Okay, I have a motion and a second to table this item until there's a full, a full motion, a full council. Let me, let me, thank you, sir.
Can I give just a quick comment?
You bet. Let me call for a question from anyone on council.
I'm in agreement with tabling it. I actually would like this table to the budget discussions, where it's part of the big deal. Because I, I really don't want to take, okay, this part of the budget, that part of the budget, little chunks and pieces. Again, let's look at the big picture.
Well, which is my, which is my position also, all along. Don't do this piecemeal in one thing at a time, and, you know, are you, are you going to have a toll so you can do street and bridge?
Because I think when we, when we talk about the budget in its entirety, the concerns that the firefighters have about their salaries will be addressed. Then we can tackle this on its own issues.
You also made your first, you also made your first run at that, and I'll remind you guys of this because this is a budget item. You made your first run, you, you had some money, and you cleaned up those people who were drastically underpaid based on the like positions other places. That was your first run. That was what you did at the last budget, if you remember that, okay? People that work for us, their, their pay scale was completely out of line, and so we fixed that with the first chunk of money. Now, the second chunk of money, you've got other challenges, and those include, for the fire department and the police department, problems with compression in their wage scales, where being promoted doesn't do you any good. And so you guys have that challenge in front of you. I definitely think that needs to be a serious part of your budget discussions. And frankly, Ms. Marley will be able to explain to you where else you have compression problems. Because you're going to find out you have compression problems in multiple departments, so I hope that's what you choose to do with it. But I so agree with Mr. Hirschfeld that let's not do this one thing at a time here. But anyway. That said, I have a motion and a second to table. Do I have public input on the table motion? Okay, call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Looks like we have a five, one, two, three, four, five to one vote, Mr. Alexander being opposed on tabling. We go to item number 24. This is the discussion on code of ordinance, Section 8.105, noise from a motor vehicle regarding enforcement measures of loud stereo music emitting from vehicles. And we may have.
Don't slap that guy over there.
Hang on just a second. I'll call you up. I'll call you up in just a second. I think we're running fast enough that I'm causing grief.
I know the chief is out of town.
Okay, is there anyone here on the police, from the police department on this item? Okay, Ms. Remmers, do you know anything about attendance on that? Okay. Mr. Silva, would you like to talk about it? You're not going to have your presentation. So would you like to talk about it and then maybe table it for a future agenda item?
We could, and let me just preface this by saying that I've, I've, I've got at least two, three phone calls from folks asking whether we had a noise ordinance or not. And it all related to these motor vehicles where there booming noise, and we've all heard them. We, we hear them every day. So what they, Mike, their request to me was please find out, put it on the agenda, and, and discuss it, whether this thing has teeth or not, because it seems like folks are taking advantage of the situation. And it's, it's annoyance, and just wanted to know where we as a city stand on the issue, so.
I'll tell you, it's, it's tough. There've been different discussions about what base does and how it sound, how it travels and, and all that. And we have terrific problems where we send a police officer to, even to a house, and the police officer can't feel or hear what the, what the resident is feeling or hearing.
And it's really not, not, these calls that I got had nothing to do with bars or, you know, them emitting. It was just these traveling cars that are going by their house, and they're rattling their windows and, you know. So that, that was the main crux of this idea.
How do you police something like that?
Do, do you, I mean, policing that would be difficult, but, but, I mean, one question that we could ask a police officer, and maybe that's why I'm saying maybe table it and then be able to.
And I think we need to table it.
Is how do you police it, and if someone called in with a license plate, would that have any?
Exactly.
You know, and some questions.
And stuff like that is what I was going to get at.
Okay, sir. Well, so then I think we don't really have much we can do with it today, and it's just a discussion item, but I'd encourage you to bring it back up for future agenda.
Could I ask?
Oh, please. I'm, I'm sorry.
My friend there, if you wanted to add something to.
Mr. Silva, thanks. I'll call for a public comment. Thanks for helping me. Do you guys have any other questions before I do? Sir, come on up. Call, a public, call for public comment on this item. I, I do need coaching sometimes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Honorable Mayor and the council members here and the opportunity to come in a free American to discuss these items, which I'm passionate about, I'm adamant about, trying to see some changes made here in the San Angelo city limits where residents are concerned.
Go ahead and go ahead and introduce yourself, just because you're being, you're being video.
Okay, Gary Gitz, living on the east side of San Angelo.
Thank you, sir.
And I want to extend the appreciation to my council member, Mr. Johnny Silva, for answering my calls and talking and discussing and getting this put on the agenda today. It's very nice to know that in America, this is the way a lot of things are settled. It's the way a lot of things are, are done, and then we have to follow protocol. And I appreciate all your, your, your input into this town and how it's operated. And I'm adamant about it because it's been going on for too long. And as I see it, the stereo shops, they're in business to make money, but when they put up a sign stating that this is a very loud stereo, and it's, I don't think they're going to use it in their backyard, which would be disturbing to a neighbor. But they're coming in and around a neighborhood intertwined with resident and business, like myself. And the input I get from neighbors and friends and just, I'll, I'll say, listen to that, listen to that. What do you think? Man, that is irritating. I'm tired of that. They come around my neighborhood, you know, these are, these are general. And this is the things that I hope would, would be in maybe a community forum, where we can get together and maybe offer an opportunity for the public to come together. This is one area, but I think a little community gathering might, might put some input on different sections of town and see what people's ideas are about it, because this, this is really starting to be, become more of a nuisance. And I would like to also say that, you know, you've got jet aircraft, and I don't mean to be funny about this, but you've got trains in my area that make quite a bit of noise, but that's progress. Jet airplanes. Motorcycles are a little disturbing to me because of the mufflers that they have on them. But my issue is right now is with the base that's emitted from these stereos. They come down in my neighborhood and around, they circle, they meet with their friends, and also they are having some get-togethers at their residence. And that's when you can call in and give a direct address, because you have that, that's a physical address. If you want to be quick about it, you could follow them down to the, the red light and get their license number, and you can report it. I don't know how far that goes. Maybe, maybe, maybe there's some things that San Angelo Police Department is following up on, and we would hope they would do that. It's just, it's just the nuisance of it that I'm getting a little tired. And I'll, and I'll be a little more clear about it. Wherever you go, if it's HUB, the county library, when I'm up on second floor, those big beautiful plate glass windows that, that separate, you know, the noise out there, they, they have no barrier to that. When those boys and girls park their vehicles, the SUVs, and it's all types of vehicles, trucks, small, big, large. I don't hear it much from motorcycles, thank God, but the idea about any vehicle's got it, and, and they're proud of it. And I, and I think that's great here in America. But there has to be a certain tolerable level for all of us to deal with. We do that with speed. Radar can pick up speed, and then that's when the officer can issue a citation or a warning at his discretion. I don't know what can be done about noise level. I just bought a little instrument from Radio Shack and a few months, a few years, about a year ago, it was about 45 bucks. But the other day I got it on sale for $9.97. So I bought it. I don't know how to operate it yet, but I'm, I'm working on it. But I'm thinking that little needle's going to move when I hear the boom boom comes by. And create a, when I'm watching like my TV and listening to my radio, that noise will start emitting from three blocks out at least, penetrating, it's a resounding noise, if that's the proper term, but it, it starts pulsating, and you hear it. You can't get away from it. Motorcycle just blitzes by, aircraft goes by, and you, and you, you deal with that. You can't stop an aircraft or a train from making noise. That'd be senseless, stupid. But these, these, these stereo units, I believe, could be halted a little bit, just by some common sense. A patrol, roll the windows down now and then, take a little park, do some bookkeeping, make some record keeping. Listen, you can't hear that. You can hear it also with the window up and the air blowing in a, in a patrol car, or anybody can. But when you're next to it, it's a nauseating noise, and I, I'll guarantee you, you get tired of it, and you'll, you'll walk away from it, or you'll drive away from it. But let me just check my notes just to see if, if there's anything I feel like would be pertinent today. I'd like to know more about the court data. What goes on in a court? How many citations were, were issued in 2012 last year?
For noise?
For noise, and have, I'd like to know a little bit, are they being issued, or complaints, I mean, being answered? Or warnings being put out? The ordinance may state that there's a 10:30 PM curfew or something. I, I read the ordinance, and I didn't see that. I'd like to be pointed out if that is in there. 10:30 PM is a nighttime thing where people trying to get news, news done, go to sleep. This noise is all day long. It'll, I, I witnessed it at 4:30 this morning, 2:30 last night, because I had some issues going on at that time, and they drive by pretty slow, windows down. That's the key. The windows are down in their vehicle. They want you to hear that noise, because they probably can't stand the noise inside with all the windows rolled up. Maybe it would interfere with their hearing of, of, of situation. I hope, I hope it would. Anyway, I'll, I'll be more brief about this. Let me see. Okay. Okay, we can just go to the next stage with further discussion on this, and I'll be anxiously awaiting from Mr. Silva's or some news item concerning this, and I'll, I'll try to reappear and have my notes a little better shape so I can maybe make it more presentable to you and, you know, as you, as I want you to understand it, my passion, my passion for this issue. And I thank you for your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gitz.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on item number 24 before I move us on? All right, at this time, let me see what our needs are for executive session as it relates to. Okay, we do have two items for executive session. Let me get us into executive session. Let me read the language. Executive session is entered under the provision of Government Code Title 5, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement That Meetings Be Open, Section 551.071, to consult with an, with an attorney or with our attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct clearly conflicts. Item number 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And item number 551.087, to discuss an offer of financial or other incentive to accompany or companies with whom the city is conducting economic development negotiations. It is 11 o'clock, and we're moving into executive session. It's 12:11. We'll move back into regular session and call the meeting to order. First is item number 25. We do have an action on a matter that was discussed in executive or closed session, and so let me ask our City of San Angelo Development Corporation Director, Bob Schneeman.
Thank you. We, we do have an offer from Scott Measurement Services Incorporated for the purchase of six acres at the industrial park. Their offer, their offer price is $17,500 per acre. This has been unanimously approved and recommended by the CUSA DC Board at a special meeting yesterday. So we would, we would seek at this point city council approval for the purchase, or for the sale of six acres at a price of $17,000 per acre.
$17,500.
$17,500, sorry.
Thank you.
Will you approve?
I have approved, I have a motion from Mr. Self, a second from Mr. Silva. Do I have any question on this item? Let me call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number 26. This is the announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Item number 14 obviously needs to be moved forward. That was tabled earlier, Ms. Remmers. It's a zoning item or whatever, so we know that. Is there, Mr. Silva?
I have one that was brought to my attention. It's more of a safety slash security factor that some of the residences here in, in town have no numbers on their mailboxes or have wrong numbers on mailboxes. So as far as maybe even the 911 service or something, there seems to be some kind of a, there, there's problems out there. So I don't know what we can do to enforce that, but.
I don't either.
Or they'll buy a mailbox with a number on it and just leave it, and it's not even anywhere close to being the right number, so.
Okay.
There's postal service authority.
I thought that was a federal law that you couldn't, couldn't do that.
Turn it into the post office, and they can enforce it.
Turn it into the post office, people. Right?
That's what I've been told.
Sounds right.
Anyway.
More, Mr. Silva?
That's it.
Mr. Hirschfeld?
I'd like to get an update on that.
Did you have your hand up? I couldn't see it.
No. You act like a person that's making his last meeting.
I know. Mr. Hirschfeld?
I would like an update, or just something on what's going on with the housing subcommittee.
Okay.
Where we stand, what's going on, status.
We're almost there.
But I, I would, yeah, people are asking.
I think you're saying very, very.
Very, very close.
Very, very close at this point.
Anything else, Mr. Hirschfeld? Ms. Farmer?
Oh, well, now I've got the stage, and my mind just went blank.
Oh, please do tell us.
What was it?
Well.
Hold on.
I'm, I'm going to get you all the time you want.
Is that Jeopardy? Bang. Dang. I got just so busy wanting to block both of you from my elbow.
Feel the love.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, now I know what it was. Uh, possibly if, if, uh, I know that Michael knows about it and, uh, I need to move forward with, uh, the land between Christian Village and, uh, uh, what used to be Big Lots. They're on the loop and right in through there, the drainage ditch. And really and truly, I just need to sit down with you and, uh, we don't have anybody in the engineering department, do you?
Tim Wolf.
Tim?
Tim, okay. And Daniel, and possibly come up with a recommendation to bring to council because this thing is running about 16 years old that they've been trying to get something done. And it, there's never been anything done. With, we will do something or we won't do something. There's never been a decision made. And the last piece of correspondence came from Christian Village's attorney. So I really would like to move on that land.
I think we did get a memo from Mr. Bailey before he left that kind of gave us some background on that. So I think we've got a good place to start from.
Yeah, I've got several communication pieces and stuff that need to share, but we do need to move on that. Um, Brian Gitts. Oh, and our next meeting is the 18th. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
And then the following?
The following meeting is the 25th. I will not be here. So.
Okay. She will not be here for the 25th, which is the, the, really the special meeting being called to canvass the votes and hand off to a new council. So, okay. I, I know that I will not be here on the 18th. Okay?
I'll be here then. So.
You know, if we don't get the golf carts on the 18th, and that's an issue I'd brought up, I'd like to discuss golf carts, uh, uses by apartment complexes. And we have no regulations, so therefore it's not legal. The city has the right to create regulations for golf carts and make them legal. Uh, and, and I think different parts of the city have different problems related to that. My part of the city is wide open. I'm not so sure about SMD 5 being real tight, compact. I need to hear input to even, I don't know how we think about it. So the golf cart issue, it has to be next meeting or, or y'all have to invite me up to talk about it later, what I know and what I think. By that point, I can't vote.
Get some state regs on the licensing and issue and then.
That, uh, we can govern.
Are you asking for us to amend the ordinance to reflect, um, I mean, the state law allows a city to incorporate special guidelines for use of golf carts.
That's what he said.
And that's, I would like to incorporate special use guidelines, but we have none.
Okay. Well, we certainly, um.
It'd have to be next meeting for me to be involved here on the council.
Well, we would need to, um, have specific guidelines requested of us. We do, we are aware of, um, one potential request at Angelo State.
Correct.
However, that wouldn't be a citywide, but we haven't had, um, uh, any guidelines proposed to us to incorporate into an ordinance, but, um.
Do, we, we have to have them proposed to us? I, I was hoping for a discussion so the council could propose.
Okay.
To legal guidelines.
Right. Okay, that's fine. I didn't know if a department was coming forward or.
Need them to.
There are many ways that, um, council can entertain legislation and that, that could be one. Yes.
It couldn't be passed that day. I could just get my input and leave it up to you guys to pass it later if you want.
Okay.
It'll be a discussion.
Okay. I'm not seeing anything else. So I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second. We'd be good all day today.
I think you were ready. You just were too slow.
Oh, it's all right. I, I got mine approved. My, my first one may have failed, but my second one was approved. I just made sure I made it on the land.
Oh. Where are we on Mr. Murphy still? The last meeting?
We, I, I was going to ask that it comes back on the 25th, not the 18th.
Okay.
Uh, but I, uh, if you're going to be out.
Oh, I, don't work it around me. I just wanted, uh, I've had some conversations with him and I didn't want to let it fall between the.
Yes, I, I would like for it to come back on the 25th.
We're not adjourned. I haven't taken the vote. I have a motion and a second, but I have not taken a vote. So if there's anything that, that you need, he just said he wants the Mr. Murray issue up there on basically about, uh, Great Creek Road and 43rd Street to be handled sometime there. So, okay. I do have a motion and a second to adjourn. Let me call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.